I will bring this meeting of the Austin City Planning Commission to order. First up is a review of the minutes. Have all the commissioners had a chance to review the minutes? And are there any adjustments? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Actually, we need to do, I think, a roll call for this, right?
Yes.
Okay. Would you want me to do the roll call?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Lutz.
Aye.
You might have your, uh, no.
No.
Commissioner Schrock.
Commissioner Schrock, Rita.
Minutes? Maybe she can't hear us.
Can you hear us, Rita?
Okay, there's an issue.
All right.
Technical issue there.
Let's go to Commissioner Stewart.
Turn it down to 34.
I don't know if she, Rita, if you can hear me at all, you need to turn your volume up.
Let me try the chat box. See, this is why we approve the minutes first, so we can figure out any technical difficulties.
Yeah. Very good.
Rita, are you able to hear us? Come on here, Erin. Erin, can you hear us now?
Uh, you're in mute, I think.
We can't hear you.
I can't hear you, Erin. All right, maybe we should just...
Okay, I'm gonna tell Rita to try and disconnect and join again. Unless you can think of a better way to have her hear us.
Yeah, I think, uh, so Karim just joined us. Karim, can you hear us?
All right, I have a little bit of trouble connecting.
Okay, so you're having some trouble hearing me?
I can hear you fine.
Or is it the...
I can also hear you.
Okay, how about, can you hear each other?
I can hear, I can hear Mike.
Yep. We're still working on trying to get Erin. I can see him testing, but I can't hear him yet.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you, Karim.
We can hear you fine. Hi, Karim, how are you?
We just started and we were...
I'm doing well, thank you.
And just to get you up to speed, we just started, we were, we were doing the minutes, and then we noticed we had some technical difficulties with a couple of our commissioners.
Right. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
We can. All right, good.
Okay, yeah, it looks like Rita's gonna try again, but we do have, we still have a quorum, so why don't we try that roll call again? Mike, can you see who is here? And then, I think we got Jay already.
Yep, we got Jay. Let's, let's do the other easy one in the room. Commissioner Yon, to approve the minutes.
I'm here.
Is that a, a, an a to approve the minutes?
Do you approve the minute?
Each one, yep.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, myself, I vote aye to approve the minutes. Melissa, I believe, voted aye to approve the minutes. Erin, do you vote to approve the minutes?
Aye.
All right. And I see Rita's on here. Rita, can you hear us?
Maybe she can send a message.
Rita, can you hear us?
Hi, Rita. All right, well, we'll go without, I guess.
Okay. I think we had enough of the quorum to approve the minutes.
Oh, did, uh, I'm sorry. Karim, you weren't at our previous meeting, so I would assume that you're probably not. Mike, your thoughts?
Oh, yeah. Karim, um, how do you vote to approve our minutes from the last meeting?
I vote to approve them. I, I, I don't know how to say, what do I say? Yes?
Aye is fine.
Aye, there you go.
Wonderful. Sorry for the confusion, and welcome to the commission, we're excited to have you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, with that, we will move on to the agenda.
Sorry. Oh, yeah.
So, I believe, first up on the agenda, Holly, correct me if I'm wrong, is a fence appeal for Chris and Kelly Sucek?
Yeah, it's Chris Sucek, Sucek?
Sucek.
Sucek and Kelly Anderson. They are requesting a fence appeal to build a six-foot privacy, privacy fence on a corner lot that is within the twelve-and-a-half-foot setback required by the city, by our ordinances. I guess I can go forward with that matter. The petitioner and, well, the petitioners live at 511 Fourth Avenue Southwest. You should have a couple of aerials in your materials showing the location of the property. The Page One attachment, these are from the petitioner, shows where the sidewalk on the property ends. Or, well, actually, that extends past his property. To look at this with the property lines here. So, the, the, actually, yeah, the sidewalk does end at his property, property line, where the neighbor's garage is located. I did talk to the city engineer's office, and they said that it is likely that they would extend it. So, I mean, that's really not a huge issue. He has, the petitioner has proposed to have chain link fence in that area to the south that actually is where that sidewalk ends. And the area in question is between the house and the garage. I highlighted it in your materials. I think it says Page Two at the top with a little star. That section, so, the distance from the house to the sidewalk is eight feet. So, the petitioner could just match his fence up with the house. The house is already within that twelve-and-a-half-foot setback area, so it's a non-conforming setback. But he would like, the petitioners would like to extend the privacy fence to within two feet of the sidewalk. So then that would, so then they would have, I mean, technically, they would be requiring a, uh, an appeal that would allow them to, to do an additional ten feet, but in reality, it's like six feet that they're extending into that setback area. And then the, uh, let's see. This isn't a resi, this is a residential area. You can see that there is a driveway near where this fence extends into the side yard setback. And the petitioner proposes to do an angle on...
There's somebody in the waiting room.
We have somebody waiting to log in. Looks like Rita's giving another shot. Bear with me a second here. So, the, so the petitioner is proposing to have an angle near the driveway to allow greater visibility while backing into the sidewalk area from his driveway. The things that you might want to consider are basically the compatibility, the safety, and the reasonableness, so compatibility with the area or the neighborhood. So, he's proposing a six-foot privacy fence along that particular stretch of property. The proper, or the fence to the south then would be chain link. And under our ordinances, our fence ordinance, an appeal of the ordinance requirements is allowed. So, it's not, not exactly like a variance, it's a little less restrictive where you're not, where you're able to just, like I said, look at maybe some things like, again, the compatibility and the safety and the reasonableness of the, the fence in that location. No, that's okay. Uh, so, yeah, the petitioner did intend to come to the meeting. I sent a link earlier today, but I'm just gonna see if he's, nope, this is... We just have another request. In the meantime, does anybody have any questions, or is there anything that you noticed that you're wondering about?
Holly, so looking at this, the garage has its own little driveway, and I see the angled fence on one side, but the fence is actually gonna go on both sides of the garage, is that correct?
Yeah, but on the south side, it's gonna be chain link, so there'll be visibility.
So, it's gonna be two different materials?
Correct. I think their idea, from just briefly talking to the petitioner, they have a patio area between the house and the garage that they want more private versus the other portion of their yard. And also, he said it was a fairly small area, so that's why they were hoping to get the extra six feet versus just going directly from the house.
Holly, I know that you, I saw the list of all the addresses that you sent this information to. Did we get any response from any neighbors?
Um, you know, we actually do not send out notices for fence appeals.
Okay.
So, it was probably included from, I'm just checking with Erica. Oh, that was from the other matter on the agenda.
Commissioners, any questions for Holly on the fence appeal?
Is the only thing that we're considering here is the setback from the sidewalk?
Yeah, so we require, so it's considered like a, the side yard on a corner lot is considered like a second front yard for vis, visibility reasons. So, they, instead of a five-foot setback, we require a twelve-and-a-half-foot setback, which is half the distance of a, a front yard, which is a twenty-five-foot setback. So, yeah, the only question is, is whether they can put a fence, a privacy fence, within that twelve-and-a-half-foot setback. So, it would be, but in this instance, the house is only setback eight feet. So, if they would have, if they would do like a, like a picket fence, or a chain link fence, or something like that, it wouldn't be an issue. They could go right up to the property line, but since it's a privacy fence, the general concern is, is visibility on the corner lots. So, that's something to consider here, you know, a car driving by, or a person walking down the sidewalk, is, is there gonna be any concern, safe, are there gonna be any safety concerns in those instances?
And this is our recommendation to the council?
Yes, this is.
With the commissioners who are looking at the packet, I found a page with a handwritten Page Three on the upper left-hand corner with a star. I think it's right above Holly's signature, with a picture and a lot of writing that sort of lists on each side what it's going to be if you're having a hard time envisioning this. That's the one that I'm finding most helpful right now. It shows which side will be forty-eight inches, which side will be sixty inches, which side will be chained.
Yeah, the petitioner argues or makes notes on his documents that it's a low-traveled block, primarily because the sidewalk ends about halfway. Again, that's probably going to change at some point if any road projects are done in that area, according to the engineering department. Whether it would increase traffic dramatically or not, I don't know. They did try to account for, I guess, the visibility of someone on the sidewalk with that angle. So, he's saying he would set it at a forty-five-degree angle. I mean, of course, the planning commission can make other recommendations. You can, you can approve, recommend approval, recommend denial, or recommend approval with conditions.
And a proper setback would be six feet?
Um, actually, they would have to be twelve-and-a-half feet setback from the sidewalk. And in this particular instance, they would be two feet setback from the sidewalk. And we have had instances where the privacy fence is right up to the sidewalk and then has that angle. So, I guess, I, I do like the idea that they're setting it back more than, you know, that they're not just going right up to the sidewalk.
Fair enough. Not a terrible distance, though.
No, it's, no, it's not. Two feet is not a great deal of distance.
So, this is the corner lot, right?
I like the angle, because I, I can see how that increases visibility for the garage. I'm curious why, do you know why they angled one side and not the other?
There's no entrance or exit on the other side, and it's not, it's, it's not at...
On the side of the garage driveway that faces the house is angled, on the other side appears to be a straight line. Is it because it's chained and wooden?
Yeah, because, yeah, yes, because it's chain link, yes.
I think this one's real similar to the, the request we looked at at our last meeting, in that the fence we're looking at is only in the side and backyard. So, there's no visibility issues at the corner, the actual traffic corner at the front of the house. The only real safety issue is with the driveway itself, and I think that angle takes care of that. If you're backing out of that driveway, you've got that angle that you can see if there's anybody on the sidewalk. So, for those two reasons, I don't have an issue with this request.
Any other thoughts or discussions from any of the commissioners?
I just know, you know, if you're thinking about its compatibility with the neighborhood, the wood privacy fence is not an uncommon material used in Austin. I think you've addressed some of the safety concerns. And then, I guess, you know, whether you think it's reasonable, a reasonable request or not, and any other factors that you might consider.
Is this achievable with a different design to conform, uh, conform to the code?
Their only option really would be to use either chain link, which then they could go right up to the sidewalk, but then they wouldn't have the privacy for their patio area that they, they wish to have. Another option would be if they, um, go six feet in and just run the fence from the house to the south, and I guess that would be allowable, just because the house essentially creates an obstruction anyway.
Yeah.
That's, those are base, you know, if they want to do privacy, they could go from the house, so that, like, like I said, that would take up, they'd lose six feet, I guess, is what they were hoping to gain from this. They'd like to have that extra six feet. And this is not as, it's not, it's not like a variance where you have to determine that there's something unique about the property, or, or things along those lines, but certainly taking into consideration all the things that have been mentioned so far is appropriate.
I have no other questions.
All right. Well, if we don't have any other questions, does anybody want to entertain a motion?
I will make a motion that we recommend the council to approve the request.
We have a motion to approve and send to council. Do we have a second of that motion?
I second that.
Got a second? Any discussion? I should also check, Holly, I can't see, is there anybody there from the crowd that wants to speak on this matter?
No, there are no members of the public here.
Okay.
I mean, we have, maybe I'll just say who's here. So, Erica Nelson is here taking minutes, Craig Byram, our city attorney, is here, and then Commissioners Adama Yon and Jay Lutz, and then myself. That's it.
All right. Well, we've got a motion to approve in a second. I haven't heard any discussions, so I will do a roll call on this one. Commissioner Lutz.
Aye.
Commissioner Swenson.
Aye.
Commissioner Yon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart.
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrock, if you can hear us.
Aye.
All right. And for myself, I also vote aye. So, I believe that passes unanimously on to city council.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, other one that we have is Mr. Sorenson, the rezone of his property to the PDR planned unit. Sorry if I accidentally skipped that one. Is that one first? Sorry, I'm having a hard time with my packet.
Twelve? Is your birthday on a Wednesday? Um, so I was just, so we have an, the other matter, did you already announce that, Commissioner?
I, I just was talking about, I'm finding what page on the packet is it? Is it at the very top or the very bottom?
On the, it's at the, it's on Page One of the agenda. So, it would be, it's on the top, actually, right under the call to order.
Okay, so, we have an open public hearing for Mr. Sorenson requesting a rezone of his property at 1507th Avenue Northwest to be rezoned from an R1 single family to a PDR planned unit development. And it says this will be continued to August 12th. So, maybe you want to fill us in a little bit more on that one, Holly?
Yeah, Mr. Sorenson did not complete the materials that he needed for the preliminary plan, and the final, we'll probably just do both in the, at the August hearing if we get everything together. He's gonna come to the office tomorrow to go over all of the, the necessary items with me. So, I just need a, a vote by the planning commission to continue the matter so that we don't have to send notices out again. I did communicate with Thiessen, they called me, and I let them know that we would be continuing this matter, as well as Mr. Helmers, who is also been attending these meetings with regard to this particular matter. And I have not heard from any other members of the public regarding this particular public hearing.
Okay. If we continue this on, can you make sure to sort of check in with them, remind them about a week or so before the meeting, just so if they want to attend, they can?
Yeah, I called both tonight. I had to leave a message for Thiessen, or Thiessen, so hopefully we'll, well, I'll call again and just... Okay. Uh, so Ms. Nelson just said that she confirmed to them when the next meeting will be.
Okay. Perfect. Well, then, can I get a motion to continue the request of rezone to the August meeting?
So moved.
Got a motion to continue? Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion for, to continue, let's start with Commissioner Lutz.
Aye.
Commissioner Yon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrock.
Aye.
Commissioner Swenson.
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez.
Aye.
And myself, I vote aye. Motion passes. Is there anything else? I have one question for you, Holly, but is there anything else that you have for us?
No, nothing official, and, you know, of course, I would, oh, sorry. Right, so, I, I'm just being reminded that because of the primaries in August, our meeting will actually be on a Wednesday rather than a Tuesday. So, August 12th is a Wednesday, just a reminder.
Okay.
And then, of course, I just wanted to thank Jonathan Caporal for his service on the planning commission, and wish him the best. I know he's already long gone to his new location, but, and then we were able to convince Karim Salas Ramirez to join the planning commission. She had a little taste of local government as one of our honorary council members, and decided she would, you know, like to explore it further. And, so, welcome.
Yes, thrilled to have you. Welcome.
Think you try, try, try to explore further. We're gonna learn.
We will help you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, what did, anything else, Mike?
Yeah, so, I...
Commissioner Postma, sorry.
I've been hearing a lot about, I know there's an intense sort of discussion amongst the city council in regards to the levy and the budget, and I know that, I, I think that all city departments are sort of being told to look at what opportunities there may be for cuts or reductions. Is there, I'm just curious, is there anything in your department that we sort of need to be aware of?
Uh, not at this time, to the best of my knowledge. Of course, they haven't come up with a final budget yet. As a staff person, of course, I'm hoping that the levy will be higher than four percent. I have probably a lot I could say about that, but not on, in this venue.
Sure.
But, uh, no, so I, there shouldn't be any impact on the planning commission at this point. I don't expect there to be any impact on planning commission. So, I will still have my staff person who helps me with planning, and we should continue to have all of our inspectors for now. And, yeah, but, but they are looking at potentially cutting at least ten positions permanently, so...
Okay. I, I knew that they're kind of looking at everything, which is understandable. I just wanted to see how it may affect your department, and if there's anything that you wanted our support or assistance with. I, I didn't really know, so I thought I would just bring it up and ask.
Yeah, I'll call all of you later, and, yes, any, you know, you obviously have your own opinions about tax levies and, and how, you know, tax dollars should be spent, so, you know, just contact your council members if you want to talk to them about any of those issues. And I think some of the proposals have been in, in the work session documents and some of the council documents. Is there something on the next? I don't think there's anything on the next council agenda, so they'll just be working on, they just sent out budget documents for department heads to look over, and then that will go back to council, I think, in August, and then they will be making decisions probably in early September. I think they generally vote on it. And that, I think, fixes the budget with the levy amount at that point. But if you want to learn more about it, or, or follow it, just, you know, watch the council meeting agendas, and there'll be more information to follow.
I know one thing that skips us, but you stay pretty busy with, with the council, is recommending tearing down of like dilapidated properties, if you will. Is there a cost to the city for that, or does that get assigned to the property when it gets resolved?
Um, so, there, it does get assessed to the property, but as a practical matter, the city will never recover those funds.
Okay.
The property, once the structure is gone, is no longer... The property, once the structure is gone, is no longer providing any income to the property owner or is no value to the property owner. So what they typically do is stop paying taxes and the property will ultimately be tax forfeited. And then we end up with a vacant lot that we typically also have to care for, take care of any junk or any nuisance on the property, mowing the grass and weeds. If we, you know, it's something that we've talked about as a city, should, you know, should we, you know, sell those properties to the neighbors? Should we just, you know, say we're, we're gonna give up on trying to recover our costs? So it, once it's tax forfeited, it could be sold at auction or by the county and somebody could build on it. But I'm not sure how they deal with the assessments. And it might not just be taxes. You know, they might have other liens and other issues with regard to the property, whether it was abandoned or, you know, how long it was, you know, it's hard to know if there are any, any other issues. But we usually cover notice to all of the lien holders and property owners when we do demo a property.
Well, and so the reason I'm asking is, so that's not generally a revenue-neutral event when we do that. So that does have a cost that might be looked at?
Yes, yes, it, it could be, yeah, it could be, that could be eliminated from the budget, potentially.
I don't have anything else, anything else from any of the commissioners?
Thanks, everybody.
If that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Young.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Second from Commissioner Schrock. And I guess to be official, we'll go around the horn one last time. Vote to adjourn, Commissioner Salas Ramirez.
Aye.
Commissioner Swenson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutz.
Aye.
Commissioner Young. Commissioner Schrock.
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart. We're gonna make him stay on this Zoom call. I vote adjourned as well. Thank you, Holly. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you.
Well, I hope none of the council members watched that.
Have a good night, Adama. What's that? I do?